The agenda.
Can I make a motion with proof of the death?
It's been moved and properly seconded and will be agenda all in favor. Motion care. Um, voting on motion approval minutes for April twenty second, April twenty second, twenty twenty one and maybe eleven twenty twenty one. So. It's been moving properly second with two minutes, April twenty second, maybe twenty twenty one, all in favor. Motion care. Good news. Our Washington County School exceptional children department this fall last year.
This is um. We're here to teach our deaf child. Okay, in our school, it was presented to me as a gift of my son. So now I'm presenting it to you. To EC department for one of our deaf kids.
Well, thank you very much. We have two young ones that are in kindergarten and one coming in three years, so. Thank you. Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet everyone. Thank you.
Yes, sir. North Carolina High School. Athletic Association. Education based athletic is going to Washington County High School, wait room, eleven thousand dollars. So, Mr. Cross.
Mr. Cross, please, Ms. Fieldstone?
No.
Okay, all right. Uh, Mr. Crossen wrote a grant and was successful in procuring eleven thousand dollars from NCHSSA for education based athletic grant, and I think it's for some kind of sled thing.
On.
Or football.
The weight room.
For the weight room, okay.
For the athletes and help them keep. Great.
Thank you.
Stay boss.
Thank you for your effort.
Thank you. High school diploma presentation for our program, Mr. Tyree James.
The Tyree, come on in. Are they coming? All right. All right, Tyree, if you want to stand right here, kind of center stage. Proud grandmother of the graduate. Glass in the doorway. All right.
Congratulations, Tyree.
All right, um. Tyree, we want to honor you with your high school diploma. Ms. Riddick, you want to say any words?
This law is going to.
Okay.
See you on this.
I want you to get to the end of that and I'll come and stay and put it together. One of the nice student graduate.
Congratulations, Tyree.
Yes, congratulations.
Fans and ram fans are here tonight, support him, it's awesome. Good to see you, P, bro. This is me, y'all. Take care.
All right, y'all.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's get a graduate another round of applause. These will be there by Twenty First Century Professionals. Um, voting on motion to approve on personnel report with corrections. That's what it is, right? It's been moving improperly second, all in favor? Motion care. Prove of the North Carolina. New teacher support program, MOU for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school.
That's with Dr. Sellers and an agreement with Eastern Line University to continue services for our visiting teachers program. It is kind of dual, it's virtual and face to face, but um she had several meetings with them. And our teachers are very receptive and feel like his benefits and break me.
So voting on motion approved the North Carolina new teacher support program. So. It's been moving improperly second. Second, been moving properly second, all in favor? Motion care. Washington County Schools will be governed and supported by Twenty First Century Systems. Um, our committee updates you're gonna have, um. I'll be sure to come in and discuss our finance community.
This is nice. Five, six, thirty. Awesome. How's everybody doing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So usually make it long.
All right. So we have some. The finance committee met on Thursday. We have federal budget amendments. And um. Sorry?
No, go ahead.
Yeah.
Here we go, I'll do this.
All right, so we had state budget amendments, uh, March thirty first is my last day to transfer funds around in state. And so I did the ABC's transfers, so that's kind of state budget twenty one twenty six. And so I moved a hundred and thirty thousand out of transportation. And I moved it into a hundred and twenty thousand of that into supplies and material, I'm sorry, um, well, here I see nineteen Elsalon County, which is a more flexible PRC. And then I moved about nine thousand into instructional supplies, PRC sixty one, to get some um supplies started for the summer school. Then I moved um two and a half months that we had extra in CTE from month of employment. Actually, I just moved a half a month over to program fourteen to pay one of the teachers that's going to be doing some instructional items but not directly serving kids. And then the other ten months are going to continue to use for two separate teachers we contracted with. Um, for textbooks, I had to move the money from one thirty PRC, one thirty, which is our textbook warehouse, into the digital resources for our actual senators, so the um transfers didn't net out to no increase or decrease in the budget, it was just moving the funds around to make it more um feasible to spend out. We got a meeting on June thirtieth to do our um budget ending. I don't know what time I'd set, do you want to set it for the normal six o'clock time or not? Just let me know, but we do need to do our final budget amendments, and by then I'll know um what we have left sitting on the table with state. I am going to have some things, there's just some things that can help, but we'll have some deeper exploration when I see what's left standing. So that's what our state budget amendments look like. For special fund, oh, federal, I'm sorry, federal twenty one twenty seven. Uh, Deanna Brown got a grant that she wrote for ten thousand dollars for the, um, it's a homeless grant, so she'll need to spend that right away, so once we prove that to her, I'm going to get to go ahead to work on that. So that was good news for her for that grant. Um, and then on special funds twenty one twenty eight, when I did the initial budget resolution at the beginning of the year, um, I had appropriated um fund balance uh, over twelve thousand dollars because the calculation, there was a Wolfpack grant we had of twelve thousand dollars that wasn't totally in my calculation. So I had to decrease our fund balance appropriation and put it back into fund balance so that our, um, that's with our.
Is that a federal?
No, special funds. Special funds twenty one twenty nine.
So this is what we have here.
Special funds twenty one twenty eight, I'm sorry. So twelve thousand is going back into fund balance because I, the grant is sitting up there from the Wolfpack NC State. And then um I had to budget some of those donations we received throughout the year. So there was a one thousand fifty dollars, that wasn't donation, that was the selling of the bus that we did on the um, the deals. And then we had um some money come in from our re- reimbursements for um Medicaid fee for service. So that's the twenty four hundred minus the service fee that we're moving to finance. And so that's eighteen hundred going into that account. School technology received twenty five hundred dollar donation from Don't Talk or Hot Spots, so that's what being budgeted, and then um the other ones with some miscellaneous grants we had received donations, it was seventy five dollars for each school with the two hundred and twenty five dollars, and that's seventy dollars with the rebate subway. We told them you said way they give us um money back, and so that was just putting the funds on the book that you guys received throughout the year for donations. And so those are the three budget amendments I have.
So voting on motion to approve the budgeting twenty one twenty six, twenty one twenty seven, twenty one twenty eight. Yes, this is. Special funds. Right now, this is something we're going to say and switch back, it's been moving properly second, uh, we stay, we have a special one, but we, I know, I mean, it's a, as per this. All in favor?
Okay, um, we have a renewal from um North Carolina School Board Trust for our general liability, auto bill insurance and general liability. Um, so those full documents are in the packet, and then I just need um Mr. Riddick to sign off on them and the superintendent to sign off on them, and Mr. Pettiford has those part copies we need to do, so. So that will be for um this upcoming school year. And then again, like I said, we need to set the time for the board meeting on June thirtieth. And then um one of the action items I wanted to discuss, and 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 we can bring it up now, if you want to do an action on it next um meeting on June thirtieth. But um we pay out our stipends to the teachers on December and June, I'm sorry, May. And my request is to move that second piece to June, and because we prepay teachers, and lately a lot of teachers will get paid and then they leave us, and so um when, when we get left in May, and I'm holding a bag, at least I'll have something to recoup back um if I pay out June versus paying out in May. And so I just wanted to see how you guys felt about that, um. Uh, and like I said, you don't have to, you can think about it, but that, that's clearly the rationale, because if they leave and they don't have a sick leave left or any annual leave days, then it's nothing I can do really to recoup the funds that we prepaid them in advance. Um, and so we can look at that next June thirtieth if you want to think about it, and I just wanted to bring it up.
We'll be all interested in that. Yeah, that's what we need to, it's sixteen. Should we?
Okay, I'll put that down and send it to the calendar, right, thank you.
We'll be able to say, Mr. Shinn, yeah.
Okay. It'll be public, yes. Um, and then the last thing I have is some, some vendors for a, Mr., Dr. Dunsmore has some vendors for the board to select for our EC services. And so he has um Roanoke for our speech therapy, Roanoke Services for our, I'm sorry, PT. And then um speech therapy for the speech, and so those are the contracts that he's recommending. Um, and then EC Sunbelt Staffing is additional vendor, so you know, you need two quotes, he has two separate quotes to you, but the recommendation is for those two vendors. And so I just, if you have any questions for Dr. Dunsmore, are those?
Yes, the ones I'm recommending are the ones we already have. I am looking, we need an audiologist because the one we had is not going to be with us next year, so I am working with some other vendors to get somebody for that position.
Who you have as who you recommend?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay. So you know, motion to second recommendation for. About one. Moving properly second, all in favor?
Okay, so the information items that we discussed at the committee, um, well, there's the board report in there for the main expenses for um for the board, and then there's also the board report for the overall district expenses year to date. Um, I have to put that monthly pension um report, monthly, they sent it to me monthly, I have to send it to you monthly and share with the county commission monthly, so in that folder, there's a letter that I wrote to um Mr. Potter, sharing information with him, and then asking how he wants to get that information monthly, so that's in there. And then also we discussed stipends for the staff of the entire district, and I'm looking to use S and three funding for that, and so we recommended that the policy committee meet and come up with a policy that would cover those stipends and with the board so chooses to pay them out, and then um we will work on getting it into the grant and budgeting for it.
Here it is there, when you decide.
Yes. So that's. So that would be something the policy committee would determine how that would look, um, and then we would work on getting that into the S and three grant.
We don't have one set, but.
There can be scheduling. I would like to see that scheduled event.
Maybe we'll bring racks in June thirtieth.
Yeah. I would like, yeah, I would like to see. That would be a good form of staff retention. You can do that as soon as possible.
Okay, so that's all I have.
I see that we need to move over the NCSBT on the general.
Um, I just need you to sign it on.
We need approval on.
Right, because we, we use them here.
Okay, I just see approval, hey, that's why.
I just had it for the, um, action time, because I think it's signed by the superintendent and um, Mr. Riddick.
You already do.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. How did you do, thank you?
Thank you.
I can bear your good news, Tyree.
I do have, just a couple of things I would like to address, I just have nothing to say. I would like this window up tonight, um, I would like for us to take a look at, if possible. Um, I've heard from constituents in Crestwood area, so this, where the staff, and I do want to ask tonight, we could visit the fact that uh, um, Crestwood has no libraries. They have no music, they have no physical education. Do you think that this education piece is coming back?
They have to eat.
Yeah, I know that's coming, that's a happy, but there's no, there's nothing to go with arts.
She's been on me.
Okay, so I would ask that you, we could, uh, I think that we, we do not have a library for that area. Um, we do have someone else, yeah, too. We don't, we don't have nothing.
We haven't had one, we just serve on that floor.
No, you know, we had a library in the elementary school. We had a library in the elementary school.
I know, but we hadn't had a music.
Yeah, but I would like to, for us to address the board, we can, we can do that, that thing in that area. Um, how we can get it, but we, they are the most, and I, and I say this because I hear this, I've been hearing this all week. They have been the, sometimes the most forgotten part.
I agree.
Because they're on the west end of the county, and I don't want to keep on feeling like we are old, shorted, and put everything on Disney, now, that being said, on that page, I would like for you and the superintendent to address also, bring back this, how I don't think, and I don't know how y'all feel about, we don't need two libraries at Washington County. We just need one library, we have a library within, we don't need a one library. We can put some, some of the books from Pines in that library, but for them to try to do this in two or three days, I would call, you know, the library would take, that stuff, not even happen.
Right, I would love to have opportunity to address that with you. Okay, um. I support having two separate libraries because we are keeping the schools separate, we're keeping our codes separate, and the activity that goes on in an elementary library should consist of things that would only be applicable to your K through five students. So we would have um different services and opportunities offered in an elementary space that would be made for an elementary space, and we do currently have a position allocated with um Pines that would, you know, go over to our new temporary space for next year. Likewise, the middle school library um should be an area that's comfortable for the older students in that building, which would be six through eight. There is a class taking place in that room every day, five days a week. There is actually one of the electives, um, Abbott, that's moving to the middle school next year, will have to be taught out of Media Center. So you're not really going to have a functional library with the class being taught for an elementary student to go into the Media Center if you've got a class going on in there with six through eight. You know, the age appropriate peers would be comfortable going in and out, and Miss Alons would be um assigned to that. But you, you wouldn't be able to offer services for elementary kids because we literally have every room in that school building being utilized by um moving to K through eight in that facility. I mean, we're, we'll fit, but we just do fit. So I strongly recommend that we keep two separate spaces, um, and and I, I have real strong curriculum and instruction um needs to support children and where they are um even being comfortable around one another. Um, but I do not um disagree with you on needing to bring some additional services down to Crestwood Elementary.
We have, you know, and then we're asking for like our current, you know, open cities, another company name. We're asking for our current libraries, we have some Pines. She just got Pines Library opened up.
Well.
So we are asking for her to now go and build a whole brand.
Right, and then.
Elementary library in, in, in the, in the next little three days.
Well, just like she and I and you and everybody in this room, we didn't um expect the situation that we're in. But we can't penalize students by not having a full, appropriate um library offering. When we have those books just a couple miles down the road, it is going to take some additional manpower, but the expectation would never be that she would do that in isolation or do that alone. I mean, we are going to have to provide some manpower to make that happen.
Not, not, not libraries, uh, not libraries, they are doing the library work, they're also doing technology.
Yes, sir. And, um, and.
I just want to bring some, I'm just trying to, you know, this, see how we can mediate some of the stress on them being. You know, they, they have master degrees in in library, in, in, in a librarian, and we, they're doing technology, they're checking out technology, working on technology, trying to run a library and also teaching classes.
And I. I concur, and that's the way it is across the whole state, probably the whole nation. And I agree with you, and I want to see her be able to move back to what she wants to do.
They need the support, they need some full support of technology to help you. You know, because.
She has to have them here.
I just, I just. I do bring this, I cherish, you do need to be the fourth man down. Yes, we do, you know, media, we don't have anything.
Media, slides, my brain, whatever.
We don't, we don't have it, and that is not fair to the.
And I'm sure it had something to do with the amount of students that we have and the amount of positions we have, but the board does have uh the autonomy to choose what we do with local money. So um I'll be glad to bring back, this is what state positions that we um qualify for and how they're being um handed out by school. And I support early literacy for all of our students.
With the dishes down there, Russell, do you check, do you check to see if we can get a state group position for that?
We, we won't, we won't qualify for a state position, but we can qualify based on local monies.
And that's what, and that's what we have, sometimes we just got to, we have to put things back where they need to be. Crestwood, these are, they, um, we have an elementary school, and these are functional libraries.
And I'm in complete agreement of supporting early literacy, I mean, that's where we build the skills. No, I, I don't know if that had anything to do with trying to move um the rural language or not, um, and if it had to do with the amount of positions available for that number of students, but I'll be glad to get all that information together for you.
Wow, added into. I don't know why you.
I didn't say why, I said wow. I'm, I'm trying to figure out, I mean, we just went through this whole family and trying to figure out what we're going to do with our children.
I know what we're going to do with our children.
Let me finish my, oh, please. And now we're going to try and go back and create a library where we just decided we're going to, our folks have known with our kids, but had we done it differently, things could have been done differently. Dr. Carr, if you would, please try and come up with something, and let's see what it's going to take for the library. Um, library, um, fully conscious of all of the children that are out. To the best we can.
Yeah, we have a whole new school. Early college. On what which. Where the back is to. You mean, we can, it's, it's six more weeks. Yeah, it's, I mean, I know, they, they can't, I, I know they can make it work, we, we have.
I will bring you back some.
I will, so we have created positions with hope.
Right.
And this is maybe this one we have to create to make it happen. But I would say, I think that, I think that we need to, you know, not only it, but there's no no music, and we don't have, we don't, we don't also, we didn't even taken the music from the middle school.
I, I think that's what he's.
We, we dissolve, and to me, it's like we're taking the arts out of the school. You know, and that's where, I know the state did this too.
Right.
State did a lot of this, they took the arts, they're taking the arts out of the school, but we have a, when you're in a s- a small community like we're here, we have to do what we have to do sometimes, you know, to, to make things work for our people. And the arts have always been here, sports has always been here, and it seems that these things are no longer focused because I know we're trying to educate kids, but we have to give them something to look forward to also.
And, and I'm in agreement with you.
That's what we started with, and Dan started with us. But before we start building another library, I think we have some more questions, I mean, I, and I, this is not the same. I would like for us to talk some more. I mean, I and I, this is not the same, I would like for us to talk some more about putting two libraries, there's other options. Just setting up a whole brand, like two libraries there. You're clear, you're clear, we're literally clearing out the van room, so there won't be a van room. That's what a van room was.
That that is correct.
But we built that for the van room.
This is.
Purpose. And I know we got pushed in there because of what happened there. But this is, we can use a smaller steel room if if that be the case, but take out, cut the whole thing. Well, we lost, well, we we lost, if we would have talked and he did, maybe if we need to get. Now is the time, we need to put a couple trails in it. We can't get one or two, or maybe get some others that put on the brain. You know, there's something that we can do, you know, not just to say, but this is it, or we got, this is where we stop it. I think we can ask some question around that library.
And I strongly recommend that we go back to the closed session or either stay in open session and resolve it. We have movers that will be here tomorrow and Thursday. And we start summer school on Monday and it goes from June the fourteenth through August the fourth. And we we can't kick the can down the road. We have got to move. When the board made um the decision to move forward with the option that was selected, which is fine and it's great. But then we have to um proceed. Um, teachers are leaving, they're going home. And so before they get off the clock. We need those materials and we need everything packed up and and moved over. Because it sounds like it was a long time, but there's not a long time.
I agree with you. You have, you guys are asked there on management team to have everything paid.
And what they don't have.
Sixteen.
Yeah.
Well, because this is the only day that movers are going to be moving stuff.
They're going to be there tomorrow afternoon.
That's right, tomorrow is night, so they only have one day.
Day and a half and they have, they have moved most of their things to Crestwood already. We're having them in furniture, but we also do not um have them on. The pay scale after the eleventh. I mean, they finish on the eleventh.
And that's something that we should have contracted, we need more time.
And we can, we can get more time.
My, because you have, we, nobody, and I'm gonna say this, and this is not, I'm not going to tell anybody else, I'm gonna say this. I talk the same, and they've been giving this thing, you guys did a video.
We did a meeting.
You did a video and a meeting, or we just can video.
It wasn't a video, it was an open meeting.
But make it happen, we got a little thing, we just made it happen.
We had, we had a meeting um where three um staffs were invited because it affects the early college. It affects Pines and it affects the middle school.
I just think that we are crunching.
We are at crunch time.
Yeah, but but I I I do not think that this was, you know, and I appreciate the plan that is going into it. This is probably a lot of stress and a whole lot of people. We need to, we need, but one day, Dr. Card, y'all can say it's okay. But one day, for people, a day and a half, people pack up their rooms, y'all that's sitting in the packer, everything, we want that, not a lot of time. We could have over about a week, we could have, we we should have pushed summer school back in one week.
There is, there's no time, Chairman, any. Summer school goes from June fourteenth to August fourth. Which was a plan set before um DEI and approved by DEI. High school starts August fifth. There is no other time. Because they chose to do the hundred fifty hours. There was the choice between thirty days or a hundred and fifty hours and this district selected the thirty days. Well, um, I don't know, we have about four hundred signed up. But we have about four hundred signed up right now and um, you know, our goal was a ten to one ratio. Right now, we have over a ten to one ratio, so we'll see. I mean, we would like to get to a ten to one ratio, but um some of it is kind of clouded by the first couple of weeks. Our students trying to regroup and be able to retest. So there is an opportunity that it might weigh off some and if it weighs off some, that would be a good thing. Because then we would be closer to the ratio we wanted. But we have exhausted every employee that was willing to work for the summer. So, um, every employee that was willing to work has been brought before you. And so there are no other people that are asking for summer employment.
I just think I I I've never seen this back, you know, when it comes to summer school program. You know, now, when you think about middle.
And that's because of the law.
Yeah, but middle, but think about middle school students that's going to high school, they get absolutely no work. Think about it. They get no break. High school starts August the.
August the fifth.
They get no break. So now let's go back to the moving part. But I just want the board to know, their Pines staff got one afternoon. Tomorrow, kids get out of school at eleven thirty for the half of that. They have to go to Crestwood and pack up their stuff, or back to Pines, pack their stuff, so movers can do that stuff. But then um the fourteenth, which is following that, that is the timeline they hang. There's a lot. If people had warned us, just have a day when we say, you know what, because of this situation, we had days built in. We could just took that, you would have helped out tremendously, but they have no time to have this.
Yes, sir, and I moved absolutely as quickly as I could once the board made a decision on what school we were going in. We got, we got going like wildfire, but.
See, the plan was according to, I'm gonna say this, and I might get that behind it, but the plan was. I know the plan was, after we voted that night, on the plan. The plan was, you guys thought that we're going to have a pre-K thirteen in Pressway. That's what the plan, that's why now everybody's at crunch, because, and your former academic. Uh, what's his name? Before he left, I wouldn't say his name, I'm saying he was the academic, before he left, he may mentioned to someone. That was not the plan, that you guys came up with y'all plan, y'all thought that night, you had to vote to be able to have a pre-K thirteen in Pressway. So if it didn't go that way, y'all had to, they eventually started to move everything like we are in. So that that seemed to end on there, but what I'm saying is now we put people at a, we put people in a hard spot right now.
I don't think anybody has any frequency, but I'm just, because.
Ms. Chair, Ms. Chair, Ms. Chair, let me share, let me share, let me share this with you, Ms. Chair, and I'm gonna be completely honest. If you go back, you're on the board now, go back and pull the record of consolidation. We never, we didn't even have, we didn't even have seats to vote for consolidation. When they said to move this school, they went in and they fudged those, that you could vote as many times. Someone told me, I voted four hundred times.
But, okay, so, but what I'm saying is, we didn't, I didn't have a frequency. No, what I'm saying is, what you're saying, y'all. And we need to recognize that even though we had somebody who said they voted four hundred times. They they take them four hundred votes out, just not say, we're going to do this survey and then discount the whole thing. We need to come up with another plan. This is the plan that we have now. And Dr. Card did what she could, but what she didn't work with, with the valid time that she had. And I think that if, if we had sat there and said, okay, well, let's go back together, come up with a plan, so we did all this stuff. We didn't do that. This was Friday night, seven o'clock, this is the vote, we didn't do it. And that's what happened.
We knew we had to move soon. Either way. So we should have the plan, this plan to me, and I, and everybody's entitled to their own opinion. I sit and I talk and I hear say, I listen to people, that's our responsibility.
Yes.
To hear people that we represent every day.
Yes.
And they are, they are, they are under a enormous amount of pressure right now. To move a building in one day. Why are we going to get moves for a whole week?
And we can.
We paying five thousand dollars for a building that don't even, that that don't, they don't even need moves. That could have went to another deal. I mean, I'm just being honest. We could, we did not need a whole movement truck, is think about it, for the early college. There ain't a lot of stuff in it. There weren't a lot of stuff. I'm just saying.
I think there's more than 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 you realize when you start moving furniture. But um, yes, sir, we can absolutely get movers on more days. But most of the time, people like to um move or pack their own things. And we definitely, um, well, they're teaching summer school. And summer school starts Monday and school ends on Friday. And um I I promise you that I'm going to support whatever plan um the board wants to do.
Yeah, I mean, y'all already getting moves.
I had people scheduled, but I didn't tell, but I got to get bids. No.
I'm not saying, but I'm saying we should have steered it out. We should not just gave them a day.
And I don't know that we're going to be able to do it within that time. But I, all I said was, I need movers. And um I have movers um scheduled. They aren't even available on the eleventh. So. And they will, but regardless, we are going to have all those students in the middle school. That are going to be um there doing summer programming from eight AM till two thirty PM. Monday through Thursday, and I need furniture over there for them. Um, the teachers are going to be there to deliver instruction. We're doing the letter of the law. By um this, by the thirty days, and it starts Monday. I mean, the two bids I got were extremely different. One was very expensive and one was reasonable. So, you know, that was a no brainer. I I just went ahead and um contracted with the one company. Um, but we will do extra days if we need to, um. But at least it gives them furniture. Okay, I did not create the condition that Pines has. And um we need to pay these people and they're on the clock through the eleventh. I'm talking about the teachers. The teachers are on the clock through Friday, the eleventh. Then many of them, to the tune of forty people, we have new contracts that start on Monday. So, I just can't create time.
Cannot say that. Yeah, that's true. Why did you take the virtue of your computers from them? And you tell them to count them out? That's all I want. You told them. I asked you a question.
The computers had to be um. The computers had to be taken back so that we could do testing. And um as far as the attendance, those directions come to us from the state and and they're shared, shared out. But you can't collect everybody's device all at the very same time. And we had testing that started like May twentieth and went all the way up till today. We were still doing some makeups today. Everybody's computers had to be taken so that we could get them ready for testing. Mr. Smith, would you like to address the computer portion?
Oh, ma'am, not unless you direct me to.
Okay.
Oh, Dr. Card, they did check with uh, we were confident, we got a comfortable private.
Oh, I'm sure. They'll, they'll work as long as we'll have.
They ain't even ask about money, one more day.
I ain't have to know that, but I feel like they should have came out and told us what we're going on in the school. The board should have known that about all this stuff. The vision of the board. We don't know nothing. The only thing that we know is what they tell us.
The vision of the board was an approved plan to, for next year, for next year only. To have the middle school and Pines at the same building. Now, for a variety of reasons, it is recommended that we keep the independent codes. And that we operate both schools out of the same facility next year only. Because we don't have clarity on what the board wants to do with the Pines building. Because I still do not have clarity on what it's going to cost.
They they are trying to get folks, all this stuff was going to take a fix for replacement.
You come to the bar, you know, I knew enough.
I'm at a board meeting.
Yes, sir. Um, I do commend all of our teachers and our staff for all of their hard work this year. Um, it does not go unnoticed by the board, by me, by parents, um and by our students. How hard staff has had to work at um maintaining both virtual. And then when we went face to face, maintained that as well. And I'm very proud of the hard work of Washington County school staff. Um, especially um to the points that were shared tonight. We have some staffs that have really um been disabled. They've had to um leave a facility, go to a temporary facility. And um now we will have a longer resting period at Washington County Middle. I also want to commend um Washington County Middle School for opening up their arms and welcoming um Pines staff. I do think that there's lots of good things ahead with the building that's going to be hustling and bustling with activity and positivity. Um, very, very soon. Um, we start summer school on Monday, June the fourteenth. And it goes through June the fourth. Um accolades and great um appreciation to our instructional coaches and our chief academic officer. Um Julie Simpson for overseeing um how summer school will work. And um they have come up with a beautiful logo. They have many enrichment opportunities planned for our students. And our students are in for a great experience. It will be Monday through Thursday and it will um be for teachers eight to three. And students would start arriving at eight, but their lessons actually don't start till eight thirty and they'll dismiss at two thirty. So, um looking forward to our summer school adventures. Um, tomorrow is the last day of school for K through eight and we will be dismissing at eleven thirty. And thank you to all of the staff that have done extra celebrations to recognize our students' achievements in a very difficult year. Um, we appreciate each and every one. Um, tomorrow in the morning, we will actually have our eighth grade celebration, which will be a drive through. It'll be at the middle school and it'll be at nine o'clock in the morning. Um, tomorrow evening, we will celebrate with our um folks that are retiring from Washington County schools. And we are also appreciative that you spent your time with Washington County schools. So that celebration will be at six o'clock and that's by invitation only. Um, the next night on Thursday, we are celebrating with each of our um teachers of the year. Beginning teachers of the year, international teachers of the year, support person of the year, both certified and classified. So we look forward to that opportunity with the board um on Thursday at six o'clock. Um, I think we mentioned this earlier, but I'll just mention it again. We have the first day of summer school starting on Monday. Um, our summer feeding program will operate out of the middle school. Um, we are expecting about four hundred um participants in our middle school program. And so if you would like to um participate in summer feeding, it will take place at Washington County Middle School. And let's see. Just the middle school. Um, and then that's it.
Please, you're right.
What?
That was Mr. Rosinabi's um recommendation based on a variety of factors, one of which had to do with incentives. We would not be able to pay um a cafeteria staff member that was working at the high school the extra incentive. Okay, um but that was his rationale was that he didn't, he didn't feel like he could um. Everybody would wanna work at the middle school, they wouldn't wanna work at the high school because we can't pay that extra stipend, that extra incentive that comes with summer school. So he um wanted to just operate at the middle school.
Okay, so can we look at those school buses, they could want to have school buses up there.
Sure, sure.
This area here, when I mean to, cause a lot of them can travel and get some.
But if he works everyone out of that kitchen, they earn the extra summer incentive.
Well, that's fine, well, we work about it once, but can we have these? Bring, bring, what, how many is it? I don't know, sure. That, that, that makes, you can move a member, this in and account of what, seven, you know, the meals sometimes.
He, he indicated to me that, and I'm just going by memory, but he indicated to me that we will serve as many meals out of the middle school as we usually serve doing three sides because we have so many kids coming that.
Yeah, so we may not need as many, because we do have like over the kids there.
He said that that typically is more than he gets for all three sides.
I should just say, I should just afford some, okay.
Yeah, so we've got that many hours.
To answer your question, we can put them on a bus.
I would like.
You know, I would say.
And then everybody qualifies for the incentive.
That's right.
Exactly.
Yeah, that work is too big. That work. Like it's easier, it's easier to handle too.
And then we can just make an announcement now to say what time it'll be delivered.
Presswood may come over.
It's in the middle. Yes, sir.
You want, you want two buses, one going to presswood, one coming to.
His rationale, and I understood his rationale, his rationale was, how can I get people to work in those kitchens when I can't pay them the extra pay? I'm only gonna get enough people to work at the middle school. And also, the ladies retire. They work nonstop. They work.
Yeah, they need to break.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, if we have to do two buses or whatever, instead of busting across, but.
I'm sure I can make that happen.
Make it happen.
I'm sure we can make that happen because we can do that with the same bus driver that's doing the routes because all we're doing is taking it there.
Right, that's true.
And we're not trying to go past the house, we're just taking it there, and they'll be back in time to get the kids at the end of the day.
More rockets in the hands of this and that, and I know this is giving me, I'm sorry, y'all. I'm just trying to think, because I know school is starting. What about will custodians, additional custodians go to the middle school? Because of the amount of people, you have whole lives.
We were looking at um, looking at how many custodians we have and um how many students would be in each building and the facility and, and. Yes, sir, and they would, they need extra, and I don't know that they necessarily need all of them.
They may need, I don't know, they may need at least two. At least two, I mean, we think.
Well, they already have. Um they will get extra, and I will bring back to you, these are amount of kids, these are amount of facilities, and this is um the plan on, on how to move them around.
I just don't want, I just don't want, like, to come back to you, we, we don't have the room for, you know, we in the video, you guys stand.
No, we need, we need all of our custodial staff, nobody's losing their job. We have not.
This is concerning, I mean, we need to, because people are tall.
But we've also got concerns with the number of kids.
That's gonna be up to us to fix.
Well, we can only fix it if we get, you know, wifi. And people that are really willing to do, and we need to do some things ourselves. You're right. Chairman, and it will be up to us to get, get to a place where we can get our own, that's.
Hopefully, we can work on it soon. Is it?
I think I have finished my notes.
Okay. One, two, three. We, y'all gonna have to go back in.
If you have it close, we will go back in.
Sorry. We really probably stick. There will be no exit.
True.
You don't anticipate any, that's gonna be taken when we come back. Okay.
Still. I, yeah, motion section.
All in faith. Motion here.